So on this particular policy, this hasn't been revised since 2017. So the effects of what happened during COVID are irrelevant in my opinion. So is there changes coming down?
No, they just want you to be aware. So under the part where it says it's unpaid meal charges, it says when a student's school meal account funds are exhausted, a student paying the full or reduced price for meals may charge no more than three meals to his or her school meal account. Students may charge breakfast and lunches for the maximum amount. Charging an ala carte or extra items to a student's account will not be permitted. Students who have charged the maximum amount cannot pay out of pocket for a meal will not be provided an alternative lunch. So typically what happens is we have a child, there's no money on their account. Oftentimes, it's probably a free or reduced situation. We assume that, but we don't know, there's no application. But there are definitely times where it's just like, I've been a parent, I've forgotten to put money on the account, whatever.
Right.
Well, they'll give you the ala carte meal. They, and I would, I think more often than not, being honest, it's more than the three days because how do you turn away a five-year-old? But if at some point, the, you know, they'll, they'll, they start calling the parents. Well, we've had situations where like it doesn't rectify itself. And so then if at the end of that, the district has to pay. And I think three years ago, Brian said, we ended up paying, and it doesn't come out of Kevin's. It comes out of the general fund. We paid a thousand dollars. One local district said they paid up to a hundred thousand dollars. That's not our situation, but you know, you're doing your due diligence, your calling. And a lot of times it's, we just need them like to fill out the application. But he just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of that, that it is definitely an issue that.
Okay, who's doing the calling?
It will, it's Kevin.
It is Kevin, okay.
And then they'll, if they're not, still not hearing, they'll ask the teacher, they'll ask the principal, but just can we get money on the account? Can you, you know, trying to encourage them to fill out the application?
Is there a protocol set for how to handle this? I guess would be.
My understanding is yes, but I can follow up specifically and get you a draft of what that is.
Okay.
Um, but you know, it's, you know, we're pretty hard pressed not to give a child.
Well.
So.
Too many hats that I wear.
Right.
But I'm like, you don't deny children food.
Right.
But if, if we're not denying anybody food, well then why are we even making anybody pay? I mean, that's where I go. But if it's not a significant problem within our district.
No, it doesn't sound like, Brian said the most he thinks, Cindy actually pulled it up. I think a couple of years ago, we paid a thousand, but I mean, it's still, so. He just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that, that we definitely have. And there, I mean, I would say it's less than one percent. It's not a, it's not thirty percent, it's not. But you know, we eventually, it fixes itself and we get in work. I mean, we're getting them to do the application, but you know, we don't always probably stick to that three meal mark.
Okay.
Because people don't want to turn away a kid, so.
Yeah, especially when it's hungry.
Right, and we have had a few situations where it's been, you know, it's two weeks in and they're still. And the meal, the alternative meal is not a good meal, it's not a balanced meal. So then parents get mad. And so we're like, okay, but we need you to either put money on the account or we need you to fill out this application.
Mm-hmm.
So eventually it forces people's hand, but I mean, they just wanted me to let you know it's, this doesn't come out of food service, it definitely comes out of the general fund.
Okay, well, then I think this isn't something that, I think this needs to go to the board to make the board aware. Not so much the policy committee.
Okay.
But maybe the board's gonna weigh in on it a little differently as far as how to handle it or.
Do you want this to go for October or do you want us to wait?
We should probably do October to get it resolved before the year gets.
Rosanna, can you add that to the, okay, perfect.
For discussion item?
Yeah, and then you can, you know, uh, would you like me to ask if Kevin can be there? Um, or do you want Brian to just be able to speak to that?
Well, honestly, what, I mean, I can explain to the board what the interaction we've had. I would just want to know what the protocol is. I mean, and I'd like to see it in written form so that we know who's calling, what, when.
Right, yeah.
And then how, how is the school involved in that process if it's on Kevin? I mean, how, I just would like to know how that is ferreted out.
Okay. I don't know how to talk over. But I just wanted to make sure you guys are aware of the.
Are those funds reimbursed? You said, you know, filling out an application, is that the application or?
We really tried to push it at the very beginning, um, and it's through the registration process. But you know, you can't force people to fill it out, so, um, and you know, honestly, people that do, they're kind of shocked. Like, it's a pretty wide, like, you know, you can make, and, and make great money and it's still qualified for other reasons. So we try to just encourage everybody to, because there's, there's, there's funds to be had, so. But you can't make them and.
Right.
It's just really hard to not give a kid. And I mean, I could tattle on myself, I, I would.
Come on in.
Keep stuff in my office and say, oh, I'm gonna back the little thing for you because I cannot give a kid a, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, so. Hi, how are you? I think this is the most like, I'm, I know, I have this like big smile on my face, but not that I haven't enjoyed our company, but it's been the four of us for a very long time. And we're going, okay, have we thought of every what-if scenario? Have we thought of like, what da 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 da, like, so this is awesome.
Yeah.
Thanks for having us. This is what we have wanted, to have more input so that we're hearing from all parties. And then we can think of more what-if scenarios. So.
Are we collecting email addresses?
I have all of their email addresses, yeah.
So that, um, if you want to become regular attenders, we can give you the information.
Yes, I've been emailing people.
I think, did all of you guys come through the application that was on the district website? Yeah, so they, the, the form that we made.
And she called me the first week, I just couldn't come, and then I think I got your email.
Yeah.
I just meant so that they can have a preview and read through things instead of getting here and then being faced with it.
So if you guys would like, um, so the Monday before we have a policy meeting, we will send out that green sheet that I was explaining. Um, it kind of houses what we're working on based on various feedback or things. And so, um, Rosanna sends it to all of us and just like, this is up and coming. And sometimes it's, um, I think like there was at one of our, one of our town halls, somebody even said, hey, what, you know, what are you guys doing with this policy? And so then we'll add it like, oh, that's something we need to look at. And so, and then we have annual policies that we're supposed to update. So we try to house everything. And what we've also tried to really focus on is you might have one policy that's not a standalone policy and then it cross-references five others. And so, and it's that entirety, and we try to pull all of them together. But it's kind of our doc and, and so, but you can kind of see what the topics are and so. And if you get electronically, then you would have, be able to see the actual links and. So we can totally do that. If that's something you're interested in, that's a really good point. Okay, so are we, do you want to wait for Ramona or are we starting?
No, we've, we've started recording.
So, um, stakeholder input, um, so based on the attendance policy I did, we had like fifteen or so parents, um, asked for some feedback. So I just put in there the notes of, most people, a lot of people were happy. I think there was one parent that still doesn't want attendance to be, um, feel like, they feel like if their kid's home then, you know, there shouldn't count against them. Um, but we, we, either we tried to email everybody or we spoke with everybody. So I just kind of put those notes on there so you know the follow-up happened.
Okay, perfect.
And then, um, Rosanna, will you go back to, thank you. And then, um, we put the petition letter in there because you wanted to mess around with it.
Okay.
Hi, we have a full house.
All right.
Isn't this awesome?
Yes.
And then, um, I put in, so I know you're gonna love this. Um, Timberlake uses a certain petition application, Lakeland uses a different one. So I put them both in there that you could see. And so I would imagine a lot of our time will be spent on dialing that in since we're taking the attendance policy to the board meeting, but getting maybe one application that we all like, so there's this uniform.
Yes.
So. Do you guys know everybody? Should we introduce some of those?
I know her. And he was at the discussion in Donuts. You were too, I think.
Yes.
Yes.
So Ellen Pazey, I'm the Assistant Superintendent.
I'm Dave Max, and I'm from Apple. My kids go to Timberlake High School.
I need a Duke Psych community member.
She's awesome.
Michelle Thompson, trustee.
Ramona Grissom, trustee, zone two.
Zone three.
I'm Jaclyn Myers. I live in Apple building arrastrum and have three kids at Twin Lakes.
You're all over. Rosanna Sanjewa, Ward Clerk.
Brienne Lukey, parents, got two at Betty Kiefer, one at the middle school and two at the high school.
Wow.
Okay, so do you want to start with yours? The petition letter? Well, do you want to look at my computer or do you guys want this so you can kind of see and open up some of the docs?
I can see, I can see what's on your screen, yeah.
Okay, so Lakeland doesn't have a petition letter?
Not that, I think it's all part of it, I couldn't, um, this is what they sent me.
Okay, all right, so we have. Well, okay, what I think may be more appropriate, because yes, we do need to have the same uniform document at both, all three high schools.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as well as the same little letter that goes out.
Mm-hmm.
Logo.
Right.
Whatever, but the form, format should be universal. I don't know that we need to spend the policy committee time revamping these letters. I think we can task Rosanna with, um, looking at these, seeing what they have and then bringing it to the board for the board to revamp.
Okay.
Um, or at least if you can reach out, I mean, if you can draft something, you can send it my way first, I guess, for a blush glance. Um, but then work with principals to be like, are you all in sync with what's on these forms with regard to, um, what's going on? What do you think about that?
I can do that. Do you want me to send you the draft before getting input or after getting input from the?
Probably before. Ramona, what do you think about that?
Um, sure.
Well, I mean, do you really want to spend time in policy committee on?
No, but it's, sometimes the board's gonna have to spend time on the letter because the letter has to be reinforced by the poli, you know, one goes for the other, so.
Correct, that's why I'm saying if she drafts something and then brings it to the board, then at least we're not wasting the time here.
Yeah.
That's designated for policy. So are we skipping all these letters then? Well, I just opened them up and I thought, I, I mean, just looking at them going, I don't really know if we want to. We do need to focus on them, but I would much rather utilize our time right now on specific policies. Let's let the clerk, um, look at, I mean.
Yep, okay.
I'll talk with her afterwards, or we can talk with her afterwards.
Right.
So is this part of it just how the actual letter itself is formulated, not the actual policy? The policy is done?
We worked on the policy the last couple of weeks and so, um, we feel like we have a good running draft of that. But then we always, again, we try to encompass everything attached. So it references a letter, it references a, a con, so then we try to look at all of it, so. Because what we've had in the past is not everything, somebody did one part of this and so it's in isolation and then they overlap or they don't overlap and so they're in, they're not congruent with each other. So we have learned over the last eight months and we just look at everything. If it references something, we look at all of it. So we're in line, we feel like it's all in line. So sometimes there's a couple of little pieces attached to it that aren't necessarily policy, but they still need to be in line with the policy. So do we want to jump to policy?
Did that answer your question?
Sorry, was that long-winded, I'm sorry?
No, you're good.
Um, we have policy thirty, forty, or we can jump to student clubs. Or we can do the trained school doc policy.
Are all of these policies listed someplace on the district website?
Yes.
I was just trying to find them so I could look at them closer, but I couldn't figure out where I went.
If you go to the, um, Board Trustees page.
Okay, okay.
Um, yes, or the school board, and then policies and resolutions right there.
Okay.
And they're kind of categorized, so it'll like, you know, one thousand series, board trustees, instruction, students. And if you click on that, and they're just live links.
Okay.
There's, there's a plethora of them.
Yes. But like, this is the first example, this hasn't been like that since two thousand and seven.
Yeah.
And that's almost twenty years now.
Oh, don't say that.
Oh, we got.
That just, it's too hard. We're going as fast as we can. Well, at least I think, I think we've got out of the nineties. Yeah.
I'm proud of the work, we've gotten a lot accomplished. It just, it has been slow, but we are trying to do a really comprehensive look at it and not fast-tracking it. We're just trying to spend the right time and do the right work, so it takes time.
Updated on that policy and resolutions board as they are board approved, then they will go in, okay.
Yes, yep, so as soon as it gets approved, then I think Rosanna has them uploaded within the day or within forty-eight hours for sure, yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing is too, that most people don't understand, anybody can bring policy to the board.
Mm-hmm.
So if anybody has an idea or they think something's a good idea, anybody can bring policy to the board. It's just the board's job to make sure that, you know, it all stays.
And I'll get emails from parents to say, I don't, you know, can you guys relook at this or whatever? And so then I'll put it on here and then they kind of will decide. So, you know, sometimes a principal may, but we get lots of parents that have requests as well. So which one do you want to tackle? Thirty, forty?
Let's do thirty, forty.
Okay.
So the blue words are ISBA words, correct?
Yes.
And we didn't highlight, was there any? Okay.
I don't know that those words are, um, correct. I think they're.
In the statute?
Yeah. The, um, statute says, uh, the emphasis is just a little bit different. Says shall either cause.
This is a good example of what trustee Grissom is saying. So ISBA will have model policies and it's rare that we can just pull because we always go back to the statute to make sure that it's accurate. Um, because it doesn't always, sometimes there can be misleading or it's just not. So we try to just pull up everything to make sure that it's, we're doing exactly what we're supposed to do.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go, so, um, after sixteen years, uh, nope, so you need, uh, two oh two? Are you in two oh two?
Oh, no, I went to two oh five.
Let's do this. There you go. Yeah, because it says, um, after he talks about, um, shall cause the child to be instructed in subjects commonly and usually taught in the public, uh, schools of the state of Idaho, it says to accomplish this, comma, the parent or guardian shall, shall either cause the child to be privately, blah, blah, see, it's skewed, so.
Yeah, that's, that was my frustration when we read that.
So let's, let's actually make it what the statute says if we're gonna quote it because that's skewed to basically say you have to be enrolled in a public school.
Okay, so that's, I'll let's do this.
On the tape. Can you go back to the, yeah, there you go.
That's how I read it too, and I was like, I'm not gonna say anything because, no, please feel free. That's how I read it, like, wait a second, but you don't, you can be homeschooled.
Yeah.
Okay, that is verbatim of the statute, no modification of it.
Yeah, that's always fun, I mean, if we're gonna quote it, at least quote it correctly.
Yeah, that's always a plus.
And are we gonna leave it, um, referenced right there? Are we gonna just reference it in both places or just at the bottom?
What do you mean?
The very bottom here, it says Idaho Code thirty-three, two oh two.
Oh, yeah, no, we'll keep that there, I just added the, I just copied the statute.
Yeah, um, because that was the one thing, remember when we had all the parents before? They're like, well, this actually came from something, can you tell us? Because they don't.
And I feel like our rule of thumb has been when we're doing something in its entirety.
Yeah.
We are referencing right there.
Yeah.
Right, that is not, that attendance thing is not true either. What are you talking about?
Oh, yeah, okay, gotcha.
I'm like, I just copied it, yeah, the statute, I didn't change any words.
Wouldn't it be simpler just to say that, you know, it's the school board's policy that we are in compliance with the Idaho code, blah, 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 and leave it at that? Without getting on to all the verbiage of it, all we need to do is just quote the code, say, you know, we, we subscribe to it, we.
In some instances, that's fine, but we've had a lot of, I mean, we still have to be more thorough than that. And we, we have to make it thorough but easy enough to follow for the parents and the people in the district because that's been the complaint, is they don't know what this means or that means. So we're trying to explain, you know, and not everyone is this, you know, big old. Yeah, and, and, you know, big old copies of, um, statute because.
Well, but you're, you're quoting the statute here, okay?
Yes.
So, you know, we are in compliance with the code, here's the Idaho code, boom, and that's it.
Sometimes I feel like the, it, it's some, the statute, it's not as clear and so it could be left up to interpretation. So sometimes we will give a little bit more context to kind of help with that. Or the statute will just be an overview, so it doesn't give you enough of the day-to-day or the nitty-gritty where then you have to talk about implementation. So there, to trustee Grissom's point, sometimes it's fine, but a lot of times we have to give a little bit more detail because it will give kind of that broad brush and we need to then get down to the specifics. Because somebody, I mean, more than just even parents, a lot of this is for principals. It's a guide for principals as well, so that we're all staying within the same scope. So the more we can explain it is, it makes it easier for them to.
Especially when it comes to the districts, not necessarily the interpretation of the statute because the statute's the statute, but there are gray areas.
Yeah.
And there have been instances in the past where, had it not been spelled out, it would, you know, could have fallen, either way, it could have been really bad for the district or it could have been really good for the district. So I get what you're saying, it's easy just to say, here's the statutes, that's what we follow.
Yeah, no, but it's, but it's fairly clear-cut, you know, your kid's gotta go to either public school or private school.
Or homeschool, it just means your, your child has to be instructed. But here's the, the reason, here's the reason the district has to maintain this policy, even though a child legally does not have to attend a school.
Right.
Is because even though the child does not attend a school federally, well, and I even think statutory legal federally, any child within the boundaries of the school district, the district has some.
Right, right.
Amount of authority over them.
Right.
So we need to spell out what that is and what that looks like. So they're, they're not, they don't have to go to public or parochial or any.
They don't have to go to a physical structure of a school.
A brick and mortar.
You're right, they have to go ahead and be instructed some way somehow.
Right.
But to your point, there, we have policies that were six pages, five pages, and so we have really tried to be like. Yeah.
No, I know, yeah, no.
And make it as clean as possible, short and sweet.
Because we, there are folks that need to have some kind of direction and not understanding.
Yeah.
Got it.
But we have really tried to streamline.
And most of them, we don't cut the whole statute and case in it. We typically don't do that, but because this is how it was. That's the other thing is, um, we try really hard not to deviate as long as it's in agreeance with the district's vision and all those types of things. We try and not deviate too far from the existing policy because then people do not like that at all.
Right, no, you understand that too.
Yeah.
Unless it's something that we need to change or it's out of compliance.
Yeah.
Right.
So just while Michelle is doing that, our key is, um, so we don't erase anything. We will, so ISBA may have a recommendation, we may add something new. So Michelle's putting that in red because it's, it's new language that we're adding or we'll do some strike-throughs. Um, but when this gets presented to the board, they get to see everything in context. So what we erased, what we, or if not, we're stroking it, so that they can see all of the brain behind the.
The statement is, the board of trustees is responsible for the edu, I think the first paragraph needs to go away because we made the statute quoted above.
Yeah.
But the board of trustees is responsible for the education of all school-aged children within district boundaries. Therefore, it reserves the right to ensure comparability of services at all other schools. What is the purpose of that statement?
I don't know, I think it's a bad statement.
I mean, yeah, we're responsible for education, okay, point taken. But therefore it reserves the right to ensure comparab.
That's why I said it was very heavy-handed and sort of.
Yeah. I don't like that sentence.
Yeah. Well, I just don't understand what the point of the sentence is.
Is it saying our district offers the same services as students that other districts offer in regards to education?
But it says it reserves the right to imply that.
I don't, I don't agree with it, it's a weird statement. I'm just wondering, that's what the person was trying to get across.
Yeah. Well, you have multiple attorneys writing this stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're not always educators or have any sense of like.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which is sometimes why it needs to just be the bare bone. So what I need to know is a principal to do, you know?
I, in, in a way, I do understand what they're trying to say. I'm trying to figure out how to, how to word it. So what they're saying is that we are responsible for the education of all student, you know, and school-aged children. And we are also responsible for ensuring that if your kid is homeschooled or schooled outside of the brick and mortar, that they are receiving compatible or comparable services and education.
We don't have any way to control that.
Right.
Yeah, and we're not, the board is not responsible for that.
A governing body of that. If you choose to homeschool or you go to, you know, STEM or.
But what, but the statute does state that they have, that they are, have to have some kind of education.
Yes.
That.
I don't know, that statement feels a little big brotherish to me.
Yeah, because it's not like the school board is gonna be like checking the homeschool curriculum or something.
Not at all.
Right.
Not at all.
No, that's, they're not saying, you, you guys aren't, but there's, both the sta, the statute does say that they's gotta have some kind of education that is comparable to the education that you're getting. Am I?
Will you go up, will you push that to the top to the actual?
There you go. But the statement, therefore it reserves the right to.
Right.
Ensure comparability of services at all other schools. Are we at all other schools in our district, at all other schools in the community, at all other schools in the state? Are we at all other schools in our district, at all of their schools in the community, at all of their schools in the state? I mean, first of all, what are the other schools that we are ensuring comparability to, number one? And we're reserving the right to ensure the comparability, which means.
That's what I'm saying. The sentence, the sentence is weird, is, is worded weird. But I kind of understand what they're trying to get at in a way.
I, I, I feel like it feels a little big brotherish. I don't know.
Yeah, well, I guess.
This code doesn't say anything about that.
It doesn't state that, no. They, 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 nobody, the, the State Board of Education and the State Department of Education can oversee all that. Well, the Board of Education oversees all of those things and cests all of them.
Here's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about here, that. It's equal to, I believe it is. Equal to that which is in public schools that are in session.
Right. That's the attendance time they're saying, not the quality.
Yeah, that's specific to.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Maybe that is what they're trying to, in some respects.
The school board doesn't enforce that. That's the, that's what I'm saying, is that the board, the way that sentence is written, we wouldn't go to people's houses or private school or, or charter school or anything and make sure that the curriculum that they're using is comparable to the curriculum that's being used at the, um, at the public school.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, I, we just would never do that.
The only time we start delving in there is when it's specific to title.
Yeah, and we don't have the authority to do that, so I don't even know why they wrote that in there. That's the thing is.
Attendance policy, right? It's not a curriculum policy.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, and we don't have the, we just don't have the, statutorily, the right to do that.
Right.
Okay.
The parent has to make sure that they're in compliance. But.
Well, is there a way to go ahead and maybe fine tune a sentence to, that the parent is responsible for?
Well, I, I don't, my understanding is that's part of the process. Like, if you choose to homeschool, like, there are checks and balances that you have to provide, but the state manages.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with homeschooling.
Right, that's, it's not a lot in Idaho, which is really nice.
Yeah. You have the freedom to do a lot of what you want to do, which is the great part of our state.
Oversight a little bit, right? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, the spirit is responsible.
The parent is responsible for that. It's very, very, very little.
Yeah, well, the state doesn't oversee homeschooling at all.
There's no one coming to check attendance or any of that.
So you could do a phenomenal job, or you could not educate your child, okay.
What I can say is I know the homeschooling resources that are there. There are, you know, they offer standardized testings. They offer all sorts of tools for parents to use to make sure.
You can be as, be as, like, as much as you want, as little as you want. And I've met on all spectrums, being a parent that's homeschooled on and off.
Right.
And I love the fact that Idaho gives you the availability to do.
Right.
It's on the parents.
Okay, to your point.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't know that.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm learning as I go along as well, so.
What says Idaho Code twenty-five five ten?
Yeah.
That's following me.
I'll pull it up right now. Information investigation petition. Any peace officer, any prosecuting attorney, am I right on this? You have the right code?
Yeah, yeah.
Or any authorized representative of the Board of Trustees of a school district of the state having knowledge of a juvenile who is, uh, within the purview of the act, of this act, may file a petition within the court in such form as may be required by the court. Except a peace officer may also issue a citation for the curfew violation pursuant to section twenty-five forty-nine. Shall, or may. I don't understand the context of this in relation to that policy.
Yeah, me neither, that's true. Has to do with probation, jurisdictions of the court.
Petition should be filed with the magistrate division of the district court. The county of people's being such a form, the court may require under the provision. Is this, it's, this is basically you're pushing truancy?
Well, yeah, but the way it is in this, in the policy is that if the board, um, it says, whenever it is determined by the board, under the provisions of due process law, of law, that the parent or guardian of any child who is not enrolled in the public schools are failing to meet the requirements of Idaho Code thirty-three two oh two. An authorized representative of the board shall notify and writing the prosecuting attorney in the county of the people's attendant, of the people's residence, and recommend that a petition shall be filed in the magistrate division of the court of the county's people's residence in the form, uh, as the court may require under the provisions. So basically, what we're saying is if we meet you in the grocery store and we think little Johnny's not where he needs to be, we can ask for.
No, they're not.
No.
No, they're not saying that.
I, I think that's what they are saying.
That is what they're saying.
When I read that, that bothers me because I don't have, or I, as a parent in Idaho homeschooling, I don't have to report attendance. There's no one I report to. I homeschooled in California and I homeschooled here.
Right.
California's very different than Idaho. Washington's very different than Idaho. You have to report attendance. Some even require you hold certain teaching certificates, or you meet with the superintendent. It's crazy.
Yeah.
Um, which throws a lot of parents out and don't give them the freedom to do what they want with their children, to raise their children the way they want. This, right here, says exactly what you're saying. That, no.
If we don't think that, yeah.
What, what, how are you interpreting that?
I'm looking at the statute and I'm also looking at the policy. My thought is, is that no one's gonna go ahead and run around and pick up Johnny or Suzie in the grocery store and go, look, you know, you're not supposed to be, you're supposed to be at school or whatever. My thought process is that if Johnny or Suzie is attending your school, and they failed to attend school, and they've got a truancy issue or a problem not attending the public school, then, you know, and they are going to public school, they're not homeschooled, they're not whatever, but they're going to your school, and they're not, then you have a problem with truancy and attendance. So at that point, then mom and daddy aren't taking care of the responsibility to take Johnny and June and Suzie to school. So at that point, you file a petition to, you know, the, to the local police department, and either get your school or reach out to our officer involved.
File with the, with the DA.
Or you file, you file with the DA or whatever.
Yes.
That's what this policy is about.
No, not this policy. No, no. We have a truancy policy and another one, not, not the attendance policy. All that happens under truancy.
Right, but that's what this is, that's what this is talking about.
Right.
You know, in this statute here.
But in, in this attendance policy, it says who are not enrolled.
It's specific to who are not enrolled.
So meeting homeschool kids, people not enrolled in the district.
Look at it this way, that was written twenty years ago, and times have changed. So let's take that out of that, that policy statement, okay? And deal with the issue of the truancy under this.
I just, I mean, I guess to your point, I mean, we have schools that are four days around here.
Right, yeah.
And we have home, like, that's a really fine line between you seeing somebody and now you're reporting, and you're getting legal involved.
But they're not talking about seeing somebody, you know, that's the whole, I think we're taking.
I don't think it should be under attendance. Maybe truancy with people who are enrolled, but there is no truancy for people who are not enrolled in the district.
Correct.
There is no truancy.
I, I get, I totally get that. Okay, I think we're, we're worried.
I think you're both saying the same thing.
Yeah.
You, you're worried about, you know, somebody coming in and saying, Johnny should be in school, he's not, you know, he's at the supermarket. You as a teacher, you as a teacher, me as a private citizen, I really don't care. Okay, if you've got Johnny and Suzie walking around the supermarket, don't care, that's on you, okay? No one's gonna run around pointing fingers. But I'm looking at it as, you know, a dad, and my kids need to be at school. And if my kids aren't going to school, then that's a truancy issue or whatever. And I look at it from an ex cop. We did the same thing in California. Johnny and Suzie need to be at school as taxpayers' dollars. And, you know, you're being a, a parent and not taking your kid to school, that's either you, the parent, okay?
But that's a truancy.
And that's a truancy issue.
Right, which we do address truancy within our attendance policy. This specific policy is for compulsory attendance. This policy is staying that the Idaho Code states children need to be educated, and they're given various avenues that they can be educated.
And I, I understand the same thing. So take that, take the, the whole thing about, you know, the attendance out of this, okay? That one sentence that we're talking about, and address it in the.
Where it's already, where it's already addressed, yeah.
Truancy. Let's take it, take it out of this section here.
It's misplaced.
It's misplaced, exactly, yeah. You know, they try to go ahead and lump all that into one thing, and it's misplaced completely.
It's gone.
See?
Yep.
We accomplish the same thing, same, same thought process.
So.
So for attendance, we have the Board of Trustees, or for the education.
Right to the point.
I mean, to your point, it's right to the point.
Oh, that's cute. All those words mean nothing. Because, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, I don't feel like there's a lot of wiggle room in this, because it's those federal guidelines specific to compulsory attendance. And then there's state statute. I mean, it is pretty black and white. Like, this is one where there's not a lot left for interpretation.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's not. You know, your kids need to be in school one way or another. And if your kids come into the public school, then yeah, we as the school board and we as a parent hold you responsible for getting your, you know, Johnny and Junior to, to campus.
So what changes under the legal references in thirty-three two oh seven goes away?
Yeah, that's what I'm, um, seeing here.
That's what I would see is, um.
Oh, can you?
You have your blue book now.
I think just the two oh seven needs to go away.
Mm-hmm, and everything else stays?
Yeah, and everything else pretty much stays, cause all those other ones pretty much say the same thing.
Well, yeah, you have the Idaho Constitution, and then you have.
School age, attendance, it's the proceedings against our, and they explicitly talk about truancy.
Yeah.
So Jacqueline, to your point, we're gonna get through more than one policy. Tonight, we're gonna get through two or three.
I love it. Okay, so we'll take this out.
And I missed your name earlier, what?
Dave Maxon.
Dave, okay. Hi, Dave. And where did you have students at?
I've got twins over at Timberlake High.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, you did say that.
Yeah, they're, they're the boneheads. Yeah, they're fourteen, I mean.
It's the ages, right?
Oh, God, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so alrighty. That looks really dorky, but maybe we can talk about that at the meeting. Attendance.
Oh.
And which, I don't even know why we have to add that word attendance on there, because we have an attendance policy. This is just compulsory attendance. But the simple statement that the Board of Trustees is responsible for the education of all school age children.
Label it as compulsory attendance.
I, I don't even, I mean, I don't understand.
Do you need to have this as a policy? Is that the question?
Well, they are. I mean, that is what we, yeah.
Yeah.
It needs to be there. And we are, I mean, the board is responsible. That's, it is the board.
Yeah.
We're not responsible, uh, well, we are responsible for the education, and since that, we provide the funds and hire and.
Right, right, right.
Blah, 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 but we're not.
Okay, I'm just.
But we're gonna, we're gonna send this out for parent input?
Yep. That'll go good, okay.
You don't think they'll be happy taking all this out?
Yeah. Some might, some might not. You never know.
Parents, I know.
Luck of the draw.
I mean, yeah, yeah, so.
Okay, so.
It's hard, because sometimes people will give feedback and like, this is, there's not, you don't get to say a lot, you know what I mean? Like, they, this is the statute, if they try to like, this word should be like, we can't, so that's the hard part.
Is there a way to go ahead and preface that in, in, when it goes out to, to the public? Look, this is, unfortunately, this is, you can't change it.
Well, then people send them, I sent out a survey and asked for feedback.
No, I, you, you can't please everybody, but if, if it does shed some light of, these are, you know, statutes that.
Right.
Are required and.
That's fine to get their feedback, though, even if it's something we can't change, because sometimes, um, for instance, we've had parents come back and say, oh, well, maybe you should at least say this before or after, or it's always good to have eyes. And I like the idea that the parents and the people in the community, whomever it may be.
Good to see this.
You know, we put it out to them, we got the feedback, and, you know, the.
Yeah. One of our rules has been every policy we send out, we haven't made an exception for that. Every policy goes out for input. So Rosanna, you and I will build the survey tomorrow?
All right, sounds good.
So I have a question on the sending it out to the parents name. The ones that I've seen, when you sent them out, sort of, there's like, here's the link to the original, and then here's a link to the new one. Is there a way to send, or maybe you don't want to, but.
Well, when we first started doing it, we actually did it that way, and, I mean, we kind of got lambasted, because people were like, I don't understand. And I even sent out like what the key was.
Oh.
So the first few, we sent out the key, and people don't know what ISBA is, and so it just, they felt like, I, I think even one of the, somebody came back and said, this feels like trickery, and so.
Oh.
We, so then we were just like, okay, we revise. I mean, this has kind of been a work in progress trying to figure out. And so now we just said, here's the new one, and here's the old one, so we're, we're just trying to be as transparent as possible. But the key part is, I mean, some people are like, we've had that feedback, please do the key. And then other people, when we've done that, have said, this is confusing.
We had more people starting to get mad, thinking that the policy committee and the board was trying to pull the wool over their eyes and things.
Just from sending a redland version?
Yeah.
We should be more transparent, like, we're showing you our thought process.
We're showing you exactly what we did.
And so then I just said, like, if, if you want to know the end, like, if you wanna see, which is why this is what the board gets to see. They get to see the thought process, and then, um, uh, the trustees will both, like, either one of them will interject of like, this is what we talked about. This is what, so that they have context, cause you're not here, you don't, you know, and, I mean, not a lot of people are going back and watching policy videos. So, you know, that's what we're trying to do, and so that's why now we just send out, here's the new version, and here's the old version. So with the F, we're just trying to be as transparent as possible.
Yeah, it's good to know.
Um, and then any, you know, I, when parents reach out, I say, please come, because it's, like, all this is great information, and, and you feel like, I, this is how we, we want people to speak up, cause then it's like, okay, maybe we didn't think of that, or, you know, it's the, it's all the what ifs and us being able to work through that, so. But that's why in my long version, we don't do that.
Gotcha, okay.
We did try. Okay, so moving on from thirty forty, um, are we jumping to student clubs or the trained dog?
I know they've really been asking a long time for the. And we currently have a policy on student clubs, right, that we haven't looked at in a while, or are we?
Correct.
It's pretty old, okay.
I don't think it's super old, is it?
Um, well, it doesn't, yeah, maybe what's in the, what's linked to the thing is, I mean.
I'm gonna go on our website.
Thirty-two twenty-five. Yeah. Uh, the policy doesn't have a date when it was adopted, so I'm going to take a shot in the dark, say it was two thousand and seven.
Okay, yeah.
Because it does list the prior, prior district policy, Article seven.
Which was when all the others.
Yeah, and it's a four pager.
I was then did some, found more policy specific to, um, so we have more referenced.
Yeah, we have an, we have a B that's listed here and an F, which is the club risk management plan. Oh, S, B is student clubs background, then we have student clubs equal access.
I think this is gonna go back to, um. I think we're, this is gonna develop into more of a conversation with the board and about our clubs and, um.
And less of a restructuring of the policy.
Yeah.
Without having all five of them, I agree.
And I think we're gonna have more.
This is a bigger conversation.
Yeah, the board needs to weigh in.
Yeah, I think so, and then move forward, so we don't spend a lot of time doing stuff, and then the board's like, no, we.
So then can we ask? So then can we ask Rosanna to put it on as a discussion item for some student clubs on the board agenda, Rosanna?
Uh, I believe it's already on.
Okay.
Did you have copies of these or did you, would you like copies of this or?
I flipped them from my.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I just emailed you guys that doc so you can link in.
Oh, thank you.
So we're gonna talk about school dogs?
Trained school dogs.
Yes, yes. Let's go there because this one definitely is. This only one. So.
So we don't currently have a policy at all around this.
Right.
So when we built this a while ago, we, um, there were a few, we just tried to merge some that other districts had. And then Rosanna found some additional ones. So we are pretty much crafting this. Um, from scratch. ISBA didn't have anything either, right, Rosanna? I looked, last time I looked, they didn't have anything.
Did you call them to confirm? Rosanna, did you call ISBA?
No, but I can do that.
Okay. Well, I mean, you can take the cursory glance, but sometimes when you call and you can talk to Quinn or
Uh-huh.
Others, they're really good at being like, yeah, we've got some drafted or nope, not our, not our deal.
And trained dog, this is for students who use a dog as like.
No, not a, so we have a service dog policy.
But, um, in one building, they kind of, you know, just, it's kind of a call meeting and some kids wanna have, like.
Like an emotional supporting animal?
Kind of, not, not, well.
The way it was explained to me, because I'm trying my best not to weigh in on anything on this because it's when my school's principal did talk to me. So I don't want the perception that I'm pushing something through.
Yeah.
Um, but what the, what the concept behind it is, is these, um, trained dogs that are therapy-type dogs go into the school, their handler is with them. But they're there so that if children start to dysregulate or they just, they need a hug and they can't go to their little buddy, they can go to the dog. Um, it's just another tool to try and combat the behaviors and get children regulated quicker.
The other, um, piece that I see in some of the other policies that references is just like, you know, being able to look beyond yourself. And, you know, when we grew up, there used to be hamsters in classrooms and some of that's bringing some of that back of you have to take care of. This is how the dog likes to, you know, so beyond the scope of you and, and taking care of something else and then you're seeing it. And, you know, it's hard not to just love an animal. And so that's an aspect of this as well. So not truly a therapeutic kind of thing, but more of a, just a, it's another element to the school that is warm and fuzzy and makes people happy. And for some kids, they'll, it'll be.
Not the intention to open up that anybody who.
Wants an emotional support.
No, 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 no.
Embryon emotional support.
No, we, we, we have a policy specifically for, um.
Trained.
Uh, yeah, but, um, what's the ADA word? Uh.
Service dog.
A service dog, yeah. And the ADA is explicit when it comes to service dog versus an emotional support or service animal versus an emotional support animal. So we follow the ADA and there, there are no emotional support animals. I mean, obviously if a student or an employee or whomever, you know, has to have this animal according to ADA, then, you know, we, we obviously allow that, but not.
Been pretty structured because we've had other people that say we have a service animal that's not a dog. Well, the code's pretty specific that it's a dog. And so we've.
Okay.
We've stuck to that. So this is just a, we have a principle that this was an idea that somebody came up with and they have a trained dog. And so again, I see it more as a, just a, it's helping kid, like, they're gonna feed the dog, you know? Just, it's a more of a positive experience and instead of a emotional type.
Got it. Who owns the draft?
Probably me.
Okay.
Do you not have that name, right?
Hmm, I sent a request to the owner. It usually tells me who the owner is. So I don't know where the request went.
I will, it's me.
Okay.
So if you refresh, it'll pop up.
And then one of the things we did do to write off the doubt was, um, you know, the due diligence of checking with the insurance and all that kind of stuff for.
We did that personally.
Yep. So this is not something that is currency currently in place. This is something that some principals might like to have on their campus.
We have one principal that asked for it and he actually, was it a year and a half ago? And so we've just, there was this other stuff and then we needed to pursue insurance and just see and then, um, again, there's just been other pressing policies. So we, uh, we thought we would start looking at it.
The reality is you can implement anything until there is a policy. So.
Is, is the dog owned by the school district?
Uh, it's a teacher in the school district, but the dog has gone through all the training to be considered a trained dog. And my understanding is she would wanna be the handler.
The teacher?
Mm-hmm. I, I, I don't know what her exact role is, um, at this time. Or there, there, it, we haven't talked about this in a while because, um, it hasn't been up. So what was.
So she's currently a teacher, is she?
I don't know if she's a teacher anymore per se.
What it would be is that there is the trained dog, the easiest way for me to wrap my head around it is the trained dog becomes an employee of the district. So the school doesn't own the dog. The handler comes with the dog to make sure that the dog is appropriate, does what it's supposed to do, is that there's no problems. So in adopting the trained dog, so to speak, what we're doing is we're hiring the dog. And so there's compensation involved.
So it's kind of like a contractual.
So it's, it's, it's a contract. So there, there are ten ninety-nine employee?
No, I don't know.
No, there's no subsidy that moved the government.
Yeah, yep. It would be a regular employee.
An employee, yep.
That would have, you know, taxes taken from their wages.
Right.
Who's being paid is the handler, not the dog, but.
Right, but the dog comes with.
The team is.
Right. So I'm, I'm looking at it as, you know, like a police department's point of view, okay? I have policemen, we hire policemen and dog. Dog is property of the PD. And, you know, we pay for, for shots and so on and so forth for that dog. As opposed to here, you've got the employee who owns the dog and they are, in essence, bringing that dog. And then they're gonna be responsible for all of the shots and maintenance of that dog. But now with this being an employee, does that open it up for other privateers to come in with their dog because you're hiring that private individual with a dog?
Well, I suppose if some of the other schools wanted to do that, they would, I mean, they could always petition the board for anything. But just because we have the policy in place, depending on what the wording is, doesn't mean that it's a global, you know, thing because it's just like giving.
Well, see, but see, I'm looking, I'm also looking at this. She wants to bring the dog in.
Well, the, the.
Right, but now.
The principal petition for the program. So it's no different than if we get a petition or we have to provide services for somebody for speech, language pathology for, um.
Right.
You know, what, I mean, it's.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is that.
Mm-hmm.
Are you gonna go ahead and compensate her while she's maintaining that dog? In other words, like FLSA, overtime and so forth, because she's bringing in a tool for her teaching.
No, it's two separate things. She happens to maybe work here, she might not even work here anymore.
She, she took a leave, so.
I'm, I'm thinking worst case scenario of people, you know, trying to push the issue. Well, okay, I'm a school employee and I'm doing school things and my dog is my school thing and while I'm off doing.
This policy wouldn't cover that because this dog has to be specifically trained in there. We would put language in there. It would have to be approved by the board.
Right, but.
The board would control that.
And their pol, their contract, their contractual obligation, if it was an employee like we're saying, right? That's all covered under another contract. So there's a contract for everything anyway. So there would be no.
Right, but looking at policies and contracts and so forth. And I'm just looking at somebody trying to, pardon the expression, bilk the system and go, well, look, okay, you brought me in under this and I'm, this is my.
So what would be your suggestion then? What's your resolution for your, what you're thinking here?
I'm still trying to figure, you know, trying to wrap my head around it. I mean, I, I get what. You, you're trying to go ahead and create something that's, that, you know, there's a benefit and need for. But, well, I think what confuses me and puts me, you know, at an ill position is that, you know, you're, you're hiring the employee and that is their tool, okay? And now you're saying, well.
Well, they may not be an employee.
Well, this looks. How, how.
Well, just like we do with all kinds of services, we have all kinds of people providing stuff that aren't employees. But the service is, is purchased.
See, this looks more like a contract as opposed to a policy. You're saying that they're gonna be, you know, uh, responsible for cleaning up the dog afterwards and, and responsible for cleaning the dog while they're on school premises.
Yeah, we haven't got, these are all examples from other places.
Right, what, what certification, you know, are you recognizing in, um.
Well, we haven't got that. These are, this is what, we haven't got any of that. So we need to look at these and then start pulling everything out that we like, get rid of what we don't like and add what you're talking about. What are we gonna do? What are we gonna, what is gonna be the expectation, not the expectation? Because we haven't done, I mean, it's just a bigger animal. It's, it's, we have teachers that bring fish, that bring reptiles, that bring birds.
My suggestions, in all honesty, first and foremost, find out what the insurance cost is gonna be for the, for the district to go ahead.
It's already covered. We already did that. Yep, our ICrimp already answered back, um.
So that, so that.
Yeah, we did that.
Yeah, that was the very first thing that we did. Yeah, because we've been, this has been like two, almost two years in working. But we just haven't been able to get past these, all these samples and try and formulate something. But yeah, um.
Is, is there an overwhelming need for it? I guess that's my other question too.
Well, what's happened is we've had one school, which any school in our district could approach us and say, we would like to implement something, but we don't have any policy that governs it. Our policy governs it.
Put it back onto the school then and for people that are asking to, you know, implement the program to come up with some ideas to help out, I mean, and to help us to help them. I mean, they have.
What do you mean by ideas?
They have, okay, we wanna do, go ahead and do this program, but we have got no policy. And then have they given you folks or given the board, or, so they, so they drafted this?
Mm-hmm. Well, they should have. I know that Jake brought forward two or three different policies.
And we just merged them. I met with him and had him look over this one, but that was like a year and a half ago.
Right.
Yeah.
So yes, he did do some due, his own due diligence.
He did, he did a good job.
He didn't just come and say, create a policy for me. He said, he came with an idea and he brought some documentation for, to use as samples.
He actually came from a district that had something. So they had a policy in place. And so then he looked at surrounding districts and they're not anywhere local. Um, I mean Idaho, but not local. And so he, he did come with, uh, you know, some ideas. And so we just then went beyond and, or just wanna look at, you know, look at it from all different lenses. So.
Right.
Yep. So that's why there's so many different drafts in the sense of examples because he brought several examples and then we've reached out and found some of our own so that we can merge them. So it's the best one that we want. So.
And unfortunately for Jake and the school, there is no movement unless there is a policy.
Right.
So we're trying to get.
And they've been waiting patiently.
Yeah.
He doesn't, he just.
Yes.
Occasionally he'll say, is any word on that? So. He has been a trooper. So.
Yes. And it, what disappoints me is I don't want any staff member to think it takes three and a half years to get something enacted. Because that's, that's not a good reputation to have.
But he understands the magnitude of this one. And yeah, so.
Still.
I know.
Do you have, do you have a copy of that?
Which, which one do you want me to all print for you?
Just the trained dog.
Sure.
The way to know it is there's no policy number on it.
Because there's no policy to it.
Nope, never happened.
But, um, like the trained dog in this policy and the one that they came from is the A K C K nine good citizenship evaluation. So, I mean, there is a process that they go through to be considered trained. The particular dog that was requested, they've gone through all of that. And so, um, it wouldn't just be like, somebody just, I couldn't just bring in my dog. Although she's very cute, I can't bring her.
But you're saying here that the handler will be a administrator, counselor, or other designated school district employee? So they are actually employees, correct?
The handler would be like a contractual employee. Like we have to contract services for SLPs, for OTs, um.
But they wouldn't have to be like a teacher in the school to do this. They could be hired as an employee just to do this on whatever basis.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I like the verbiage and layout of Timberlake School Districts.
And that's the one that Jake came from.
Mm-hmm. I like it simply because it's, the policy itself is, um, use of animals in education programs.
Uh-huh, I like the verbiage. Yep.
Yeah.
I agree. There's some grammatical cleanup, the formatting stuff we have to fix. Yeah, I agree. This might be a good starting point.
So then, then you've got, this goes, this begs the question that I had is that is you were saying that, that the handler is responsible for all of the, uh, training and so on and so forth. But it says, that, you know, that the school district recognizes the importance and value. And school district funds may be available for the health, training, certification needs and all other financial, you know. So you're saying that we could give money toward that program?
Sure, because depending on what the program was for and who was, I mean, there might already be funding. If there was a child, for instance, and the IEP team decided that this child needed this dog, absolutely, you have to pay for it.
No, but that's, that's more of a mandatory situation though. This is a, a voluntary situation that, you know, the school, the, the individual teacher is asking for this. There is no.
No, the teacher isn't asking for it. That's what, it's the, the school saw a need.
The school side?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the students. And it just so happened that the teacher had this dog, they did this training or whatever. I'm trying to remember. Jake came for the board several times and explained it to us.
Yeah.
Um, so it wasn't, it.
Is this for elementary school or high school?
Yes, it was elementary school. Yep. Um, so the principal saw the need in the school. Just so happened there was a teacher who could fill the need, who had the training, the trained animal, blah, blah, blah. And we started it, like Michelle said.
But anybody could ask, so it would never be specific to an individual school or an individual teacher. And I would assume that part of the language would be that, one, if the district was gonna incur any funds, that would have to go to approval from the board.
Right.
Two, in any of the scenarios, that principal would then have to petition to the board. There would be something around. It couldn't just be this is a blanket yes to everybody because it would be situational on the, the specifics, I would assume.
Let's see, then, then it begs the question, all of the financial responsibilities lie with the handler. So it leads me to believe that, yeah, we're gonna fund this. And it talks about health maintenance and so forth and training, but yet there's a flip sentence that says, well, all other finance, all other financial responsibilities lie with the handler. So what does that mean?
Well, we get to choose since we don't have a policy in place.
Yeah, this isn't a policy.
We dictate whatever we want. This isn't an actual policy.
Right.
It's a draft.
That's, that's why I'm asking.
Now, we get to choose what we want that to look like. The board will get to make that decision of what are those parameters.
And is the handler and the dog specific to a school or would it be going, if there, if there were other schools that saw the need or the value of having that, would they go? Would it be a traveling team? You know, I, I don't know. That's a good.
That's, that's, that's another good question too because, I mean, if.
Yeah, it says the building administrator reserves the right to determine whether dogs are appropriate for their building. So it sounds like it could be an option to other, other schools with administrator.
Yes, or if there are two handlers and two dogs and two different.
Yes, or if there are two handlers and two dogs in two different schools for the duration of the whole day, then, you know.
I think we need to, I think we're asking a lot of questions that we aren't even there yet, we need to pick something and work through it.
I like the Kimberly one.
I like the Kimberly one.
Okay, well, let's start with Kimberly then.
Roseanne, can you, is there, can you quickly download that to an edit, till we can edit, is that doable? I'm asking cuz I don't have any idea.
Or just copy and paste it all on the document?
Yeah, we could do that, I guess, right?
If that's where, and then we, at least we have something to start with, so we have to remember to figure out the cost thing and then they, if they're gonna be traveling.
Some principals won't go for this because there's some, like, there's there's allergies in schools that won't allow it, so this likely is not gonna work for everybody, so that would, and it, year to year, that would change. I mean, if you have a child with significant allergies, that's a no-go for that situation.
Or an employee, I mean, whatever you have. Somebody that just couldn't.
Yeah, cuz now there's.
Yeah, it looks like they went.
Yeah, you'd have to be cognizant of that for sure.
Yeah, and they have several cross-referenced.
The Kimberly one?
And they have the parental rights.
Whoever wrote this, I think this is written pretty well, I don't know where they compiled it, there's a few things that are like, oh, that maybe that shouldn't be there, that's actually contradicting something said and.
Well, if I remember correctly, I'm pretty sure Jake put it together and then we pulled some other things and added a couple more. So it's kind of a compilation of multiple, because literally we didn't have a starting point and so that it could contradict, it's like, oh, we like this language.
Right, yeah, yeah, but it's not a lot, it's not a lot.
Wordsmith it, you know, so.
That's how they all get written?
Yeah, exactly.
Somebody comes with an idea or there's some court case or something happens and we just start plopping words on a page. Usually ISBA gives us something.
So when you say you like the Kimberly one, are you guys gonna use that and then format it to the district? So then this will go, this will go away, got it?
So we typically, whenever we get something, cuz we've done this with other things, where we're, oh, we like the way that that wording is and so we'll pull it and change it into an editable form and then we'll put our, like, this is draft, we'll put the language specific to Lakeland and then just start wordsmithing it and sometimes we'll pull from other policies. So.
I think I remember doing that.
Yeah, it's been so long, I'm not sure what, I can't remember anymore.
Well, question, do we have policy that directs that teachers can bring hamsters or gerbils or guinea pigs or fish into their classroom? Or is it just kind of like, yeah, they might do it, they might not?
I don't know that we have.
Just assume that kindergarten classrooms will have an animal.
I mean.
Right, I mean, that's a part of your kindergarten experience, class pack.
I'm gonna look right now, I don't know that we do, I think it's just kind of been an unspoken.
Yeah.
I don't know that we do, but I'm gonna look right now.
Cuz this policy, this 2580 from Kimberly addresses.
Right, all of that.
Yeah.
So if we don't have anything, I'm like ninety-nine percent sure we don't, but I'm gonna double check cuz I could be wrong. We have 2375 that talks about servicing animals. I don't think we have anything, so this could encompass all of that. Yeah, I don't think we do, I think it's just been an unspoken kind of.
Well.
You send out and get permission from our parents, okay with it, and then it's individual to the that's what I think happens. I don't think I ever, I mean, maybe once or twice had somebody ask me to bring an animal like a, you know. I was gonna say gerber, whatever.
What does it mean under exclusion for handlers? If the handler's implementation of the program is not meeting the identified needs or aligned with the goals of the train, you know, train school dog program, what are the identified needs or goals of the train school program?
That would be identified by whoever was requesting it, so.
Wouldn't that be specified somewhere in a policy then?
No.
To to meet?
No, because here's the other funky thing about policy is it's not, it's not always specific to the thing where a procedure or a form is. So what would happen is they would petition the board and in their petition would be all the specificity of what this thing is supposed to do. And that's what the board would vote on, and then the board would say, okay.
Has the board voted to, maybe, again, maybe I'm not familiar with how policies are are done and how the school board works because we're looking at doing a policy, but the board has even said that you know, the trained dog program is something that we would even consider and we haven't seen identified the implementation or what the program goals are, am I correct in that or not? Am I, am I missing something?
The the board said, yep, sounds great, let's get a policy and we'll vote on it, that's when it happens. The specificity you're at looking for only happens when the program's implemented, so just because we have a policy doesn't necessarily make it a free-for-all, if we use that language, I mean, that's not even a policy, that's that's.
Right, no, I understand it's a draft, okay, I.
Well, it's not even a draft though, it's not a draft on it. Right, but it's, but there's three of them in there that we were given.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's a bunch of ideas right now, that's all it is, it's all ideas. But typically, if there's a program.
Wouldn't having an idea of a goal for the program help establish a policy? You know, our our goal is to go ahead and do this, okay, we wanna make the kids feel more soft and fluffy, blah, 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 and then the dog should be doing X and then that way we have a policy to.
But that's not the, that's beyond the purview of the board, the board doesn't do that. That would come from the person asking to implement this allowed program. They still have to come to the board and give us all of that, give the board all that information. And then the board would decide based upon the information presented, whether it was allowed, so the policy allows a program to happen in the district is what we're trying to get done right now.
So the board's purview would be, here are the parameters in which you can work with this, so we're gonna allow it. There has to be a training, like, they're gonna look at it from the insurance and the legal side, here's all the safety parameters, here's what has to happen. I as the building principal, so when I was the Betty Kiefer principal, if I wanted to do this, I would, there will, will fill out, create some contract that the principal would have to fill out. And I would say in my building, these are the goals I wanna accomplish with this, these are the parameters, this is how much this, the time is gonna be, like, I would give all of the specifics within the 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 parameters of my building of what works for me. Now, another building could say, well, we have a dog that could be there, you know, that can only come for an hour and so we're gonna just have it be in the kindergarten and first grade classrooms and do something and we're gonna teach them how to take care of a dog, they're gonna get to brush the dog, they're gonna be, because you could, this could be part of some health standards or just taking, like, anybody could have, there's, I mean, it would, what they're trying to stay away from and as a as a teacher and as a building principal, they're not trying to tie our hands, but they're trying to give us parameters, so I have the flexibility and some autonomy of like, what works for my building, how would I see this? Because some people have access to four hours, some might be one, some might be able to go between, so that would look different depending on the culture of the building is what trust eagerism is kind of saying, so that would be in the application process and then ultimately the board is approving, we're good with your parameters.
And then their parameters is what would be quote on file and then if there was a violation, it would be based upon the application that was given. The other thing is, is that the, because this all goes to the board, the board has to make sure that they're not overstepping their governance bound, uh, boundaries also.
2580 at Kimberly is from ISBA, so.
So there is one from ISBA?
The use of animals in education programs is from ISBA. So, I mean, instead of downloading it from Kimberly and trying to do what you're doing.
Probably why kindergartners can have hamsters.
I mean, I remember being in school and we had to learn how to take care of them.
Yeah, we have stuff.
It was part of the health standards, you had to figure it out and, you know. So it was kind of cool, especially if you didn't live, you know, you didn't, weren't on the farm or didn't have access to some of that, so. We're we're trying to provide well-rounded education. Through hamsters. Just not two, because it might be an educational.
Yeah, we've not adopted 2580, so.
I can't find one.
Yeah, we don't have it, but it did, Kimberly's did come from ISBA.
So that would encompass everything, so it's not just you need to, which is even better. Do you see any language at this point, Michelle, that you would take out?
In all fairness though, in looking at what we were brought with respect to trained dogs, that is specific to the utilization of trained I just don't like the trained school dogs, I think we need to call it something else.
It confuses it with the service dog.
It does, because.
It feels overlapping.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was when I.
In reading twenty-five, cuz I like the animals in education program, cuz that's like, ooh, we're all inclusive there. But then, within this policy, it specifically states, you know, likewise, police and SRO canine's use, use in handled or use is handled in accordance with applicable school search policies and regulations, so they do identify out and pull out the the dog thing. And then there was a couple other things that I noticed that I'm like, hmm, so there is some specificity. And maybe we could have, you know.
We might have to merge a few.
Well, I do think adopting which was last updated in oh nine, but 2580. So that at least there's, I mean, cuz this talks about
Yeah, it talks about visiting animals, prohibited animals, it talks about wild animals.
Dissection of animals. And that was. Health and vaccination requirements of animals.
Yeah, well, the one on Kimberly's site was, says two thousand eighteen. Their policy 2580 was updated.
Is that, the 2580 is Kimberly's policy, that's their number?
Yes.
Where, but you said they referenced, yeah, so what was the policy that was attached, is that in that book?
Uh, no, this is the law, not the ISBA. Yeah, no, it was, so 2580 was written by ISBA, the High School Board Association, and it was attached to Kimberly's
Their draft.
Animal.
Where is that, where can I see that online, like, how would I find that policy, I guess, that's what I'm saying.
Here, I'm gonna show it to you, I'll pull it up on my.
Yeah, or you can click one of those links in the, do you have that electronic link?
I don't think she has it.
I think she just, I think that's what she emailed us, actually.
Here, I'm gonna pull it up for you right now.
I'm having a heck of a time downloading this from ISBA. I can only download the whole section, but I can't print or remove just those pages. Is that why I can't do it anymore, cuz that's how I used to do it?
Yeah, only the old updates, once they went to the new updates, unless we pay more money, you cannot print or download or copy and paste or.
No, but we have the ability to modify their policy.
We, yeah, but we cannot, not like we used to, we cannot copy, paste, we can't open it in something else and we have to pay extra now.
That's okay.
Thought we did pay the little bit of extra.
Let's just make everybody's job difficult.
Remember, cuz it got even harder and then we went back to them and said, hey, they're like, oh, you have to upgrade to blah, 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 blah version now. I think what happened was they didn't realize that people could actually extract the policies. But it's like, I don't know, we pay a pretty penny as it is.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz see, on the health and vaccine, it talks about cats, dogs, ferrets, and the citicine birds, I don't know how to pronounce P-S-I-T-T-A-C-I-N-E.
Citicine.
Citicine? Thank you. P is silent, okay, citicine. Throw it in, P is there, words like that drive me nuts. But yes, so, maybe there'll be parakeets.
This puts in the opt-in form too, which I like because this one, that was one of the things I circled, like, it should be an automatic opt-out unless you're opting in, I think. You know, as opposed to finding out after the fact.
Oh, now they've got a twenty, uh, 2580F student permission for exposure to animals.
Yeah, I like that, cuz then people with allergies could.
Yeah.
Say no, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd have to be really careful, there's, I'm sure that there are situations where the allergies are bad enough that the animal can't be at school.
Right, yeah, yeah.
ISBA has 2585, which is use of therapy dogs in the district. A therapy dog is a dog that has been individually trained and certified or registered to work with its handler to provide emotional support, well-being, comfort, and companionship to district students. That's exactly what Jake is talking about. The dog must have current A-K-C.
Which is the same thing.
K-9 Good Citizen Certificate.
That's exactly what's in the policy, that the draft, that same training is referenced.
Perfect, so ISBA has 2580.
Download both of those, now we're gonna add two policies, we're not merging them, it sounds like, we're gonna separate them.
I would not merge them, no, and I, the use of therapy dog in the district is better than trained dog.
So, Roseanne, can we work on trying to download 2580 and 2585?
I got it, I got it, oh, it's done, I'm I'm getting it there.
And then we have 2585F, which is the therapy dog plan, which goes to, why are we doing this in the first place?
You can rename it or.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Which is great.
I'm trying to make it simple, stupid, I mean, why reinvent the wheel and if we can cut and paste and borrow from somebody else who's got a policy, why not?
Right.
So yes, ISBA does have.
As long as it's a good policy.
Well, no, yeah, I, no, I, I hear exactly what you're saying.
So do you also want the, Michelle, did you also, oh, see, we can't do it with theirs now?
Sometimes you'll find some.
I got policy copied over over there.
It was really thorough, this is like even like biology, like bringing animals to dissect.
Yes, okay.
I wouldn't even think that would have to be approved, I don't know, I guess teachers go through all that.
Well, but like, but this could be used for an elementary school.
Okay, so you're looking at ISBA.
Right, right, yeah.
That's more of a high school.
Yeah. But if it's a district policy, then it covers all pages.
Which, some of those.
I think with the wording here of.
Breeds, I think, should be up for topic, it's like, it doesn't say.
That's what.
In the ISBA, it says prohibited animals, but it says inherently dangerous, aggressively or unpredictable, and that's kind of up to someone's.
The subjective.
Right, someone would tell you.
A pit bull, yeah.
Is not aggressive.
Right.
The school district.
And I would argue, based on my personal experience.
One of my clients totally excited. Her pit bull just had, her pit bull just had thirteen puppies, so she was just a little excited and it's like.
That might be something up for discussion in this, we want that listed, like Harvey Parks and campgrounds have.
Well, our insurance would definitely.
Oh, say to that, okay.
Yes, the insurance would definitely, you know, I'm sure they have specific breeds that they would not cover being in the district.
I was saying the aggressive animal part was the only part that I found was really gray so far. That's up to someone's.
Okay, so twenty-five N F now.
Right, right, if that's perception or.
Yeah.
I, you know, we've tried to make it where it says objective instead of subjective as possible.
So did you find the one that I put in there, Rosanna, in the, in the directory?
Do you guys wanna see this policy? So this is from ISBA. I'm gonna pull it down.
The word draft right in front of it, see down there at the bottom, yep.
And that's like a second period, like you edit or anybody edited.
So this basically replaces any policy that you currently have on the books, or don't even have on the books, correct?
Well, I mean, we don't have one on the books, but we would take that downloaded and still wordsmith that we've never just.
Right, right, so what I'm saying is it fine tunes it, it meets the needs for the trained dog, correct?
Well, they actually.
The therapy dog.
Therapy dog, sorry, therapy dog, if this, this meets that standard for you?
No. No. That meets the standard for having any type of animal within the classroom, which we don't currently have.
Okay.
But they also offer a um use of therapy dog, which maybe it should be use of trained dogs.
Yeah.
Something so that we're all going.
Whenever vocabulary or.
But it has a.
I, I, I see your point is, you know, to, as far as, you know, the trained dog, therapy dog or whatever, I'm trying to go ahead and have folks not be confused with, well, what if, you know, is, you know, the police canine that comes on campus?
That's covered in policy.
It's in the policy, it's in that one.
That does talk about.
In, in this policy.
The one, yeah.
Right, so I, I was looking at this draft.
Yeah, no, I think we decided to use this one better.
So if it covers the canine, the police canine here, that's great.
Yeah, so it's likewise, police and SRO canine use is handled in accordance with applicable school search and policy, uh, search policies and regulations.
So there is, so there is a differentiation then between.
Right.
Cool, that's good.
Does our FFA have, um, are they dealing with the animals on the school grounds? Because like that um, Kimberly added that language, because it's not on ISBA's language. But just that the FFA land lab has separate policies and procedures specific to that program and this policy does not apply.
Can you edit that, Rosanna? I don't know if you can or not, just type anything, oh yeah, you can, okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't locked down and then um pull this out and I'll let it parallel to the. Okay, ISBA's uh. Were those downloaded, Michelle, or did you go directly to their site and get them?
I went to the site.
Okay.
Oh, now see, where is where is that draft policy twenty-five eighty?
Uh, in the twenty-five eighty folder, okay, maybe I need to refresh it.
Anita, do you like this policy too?
Uh, you're in.
Are you doing something else?
No, no, I was gonna hold that up on here.
This on, on the ISBA site?
I'm trying to, yeah.
I don't know if you can pass that.
I couldn't find it, I went to their site, but oh.
Right, isn't that, Rosanna, you have to pay for it.
Yeah, you have to have the login, yeah.
For ISBA?
Can like, can, as a patron, can I just, you can, you have to pay for it?
No. We pay for every, now we have to pay if we wanna take their policy and modify it. They say now that, oh, what you're paying for was, is just the language, so we have to rehand type everything or pay them more to.
Right.
So this is not a dot gov site?
No, no.
Or a dot edu?
It's the Idaho School Board Association.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I don't remember what background is irritating.
So then they give you guidance?
That is irritating.
Okay.
And they'll tell you, like, this is a required policy you have to have, and then these are some of the components, but they'll say this is a.
It was just one at that.
Or you have to have this per statute policy, but then we get to wordsmith and play with the language.
Oh, I don't care what, okay. I don't like to check that there's no.
Some districts take everything from ISBA and just adopt their manual, but we have found that there's been some discrepancy specific to that. So we have.
Oh.
There's a program that we use along course, and there's a company called Lexapro that does that police and fire manuals and so forth. And it's the same thing, they, they pull out some jurisdictions and so forth, and you formulate your policies and procedures manual based upon that.
Right.
And then you, we set.
Oh, see, mine did.
Chiefs and sheriffs and so forth, administrators, you know, refine.
Always a point to do, but.
Same conversations.
Yeah.
You'll have to.
Do you wanna look at it again?
No, because I would need to just.
Thank you for coming, thank you, I have to run.
No, no.
I'll pick up.
I know we're gonna be moving forward, so I'm gonna just try to see what.
Oh, fine, my dear, I have to.
I'll be right back.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna search for it. I'm, I'm sure I'm on the database, I don't know, I can't remember what it was. And that's the favorite one that's up there, right next to it, or is that the ISBA?
Um, I, I think, I think Michelle said it's the exact same language.
So how many letters or, when you get a letter, how many spaces or characters when you're logging in?
That ISBA just, um, can really just adopt it from ISBA, but um, then she referenced that there might be a couple of changes to it, so I think most people would have.
If you log out and you log back in.
I'm terrified to do that.
I know.
Oh, well, they're doing that too.
Now I think something totally off. When did schools or why did schools go from an opt-in policy to an opt-out?
Because I was noticing when we were looking at this policy, this one right here, that you had to opt out of. Two, two, not that one, the animal one here, it was an opt-out policy and I thought, once upon a time, wasn't everything that I had to opt in?
I don't know, I'm just looking at the California.
I think you're thinking California, we have transitioned a lot.
Yeah, right, is all lowercase or?
Our board has, has wanted things to be.
Okay, with that, with that.
It's a, it's an opt-in, not an opt-out, but I think in different states.
Okay.
But a lot of our stuff, we have put it as an opt-in situation, so it can't be a passive, if you've tried and you don't get a hold of them, that kids participate. We've changed it to, it's, if they're, if you haven't, it's not a passive, it's a, we have said yes and they can access it.
And it's the allergy, the allergies and aversion, but we're not looking at this one anymore, and that's what they specifically said, you have to opt out and, but if we're not looking at that one?
Yeah, we have tried to transition more to an opt-in model.
Yes, and some of them, depending on how um they may be controversial, then there's both an opt-out and an opt-in, so the parent has to.
They're forced to take.
Choose one, yeah, yeah.
But in a lot of things, we've just said, without parent consent, we, we just have to find an alternative setting. Kids are just not accessing it, because we want parents to make sure that they're comfortable, you know, because we have certain health standards that you have to go over and so sometimes you have to, so, but.
Right. Thank you.
So we are offering, if a parent chooses then we're, then we're, we're away from our application, you know what I mean?
Oh, okay, yep, it was the last three, that was.
And who's responsible for looking at that, the teachers?
It's the same.
The teacher for what?
Well, that's what I missed.
Some feature that's gonna happen in the classroom. Um, and you, the kid, the parent has to.
Um, does our printer here?
So that is the teacher's responsibility to like.
Do hole punching and stapling? I've never tried.
Okay, you can't.
It should tell you all if you can.
Yeah, yeah, but like, a lot of those situations where things that they were. The high school nurse will.
Oh, okay.
I have, I think we need or three.
We don't need, so that it's, I mean, we don't have.
Or IG.
The teachers are calling, and it's gonna like, professional, and that person who has a list.
So I've got all these piled and it's like, oh, they all need holes.
Yeah, yeah, we've tried to take a passive approach and let it be more of a, they have to make a choice.
I'll play with the printer tomorrow.
Especially in today's.
Usually it's a little trouble.
I mean, that's how I was when much of my parenting.
Oh, and memories on this, I could look it up here.
Yeah, could have joined.
It's like, well, okay.
Typically.
And we, we were all on the same page.
No, and I, I absolutely agree with that, yeah.
All right, so I don't think around here, I can't think of one thing that's an opt-out now. Most of them are.
I think we've changed, we've, it was.
Slowly, yeah.
Yeah, the board's intention was to move everything to opt-in.
So I am thinking California stuff, because that has all turned into opt-out and parents flat out just don't even look at paperwork, so that makes it really easy for schools to.
Yeah.
What happens is you get kids don't read anything for work, go home.
True, that happens too, yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, and the opt-in is such a better idea.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's, it.
Well, it makes you a partner with the school, or with whatever.
Yeah, I mean, one it forces the kids to go ahead and make sure that it gets home. Two, it forces the parent, like you're saying, to make that decision, to work in cooperation with the school.
I just think it also protects the teacher.
And it protects, oh, it, oh, hundred percent.
Or putting themselves in a situation that is uncomfortable with.
Hundred percent protects, it protects the school district, it protects. I mean, I'm, I'm all about protecting taxpayer dollar, I mean, yeah, I'm protecting, and protecting you guys, I mean.
But you as a teacher, if you're in a situation where now there's, you know, friction between you and the parent and it's October, well, that's gonna, I mean, that could.
That's a lot of months ahead.
Well, and it, and it impacts, it impacts the kid and it impacts, like, it's just, you know, we, we want, we all want the same thing, I mean, my three boys have gone through Timberlake and through Lakeland and I want the same thing every parent wants, I want my kids to be great people. Um, and I wanna have a say-so in what influences them, I mean, I even have a say-so, I wanna have a say-so in what my family is allowed to say, you know what I mean? I just feel like that's, that's, I take that role very seriously.
Of course.
And so I want them to have an amazing year, I want the teacher to have an amazing year, but it only happens if everybody's having a great year and there's a good relationship, if there's friction, if they're I mean, you take a couple steps backwards, so on all fronts, it's just, it's good that everybody's on the same page.
Did Lisa tell you my suggestion for renaming the district?
Oh, no. What did you, what was it?
Renaming the district to Westwood. Westwood School District.
Are you gonna start that petition?
Well, I don't know, but, well, we've had complaints, because the Lakeland School District and Lakeland High School, but we also have Timberlake High School, and we're not the high school. High school, and so there have been some patrons that are like, you know, that's not really fair.
Or whatever.
And so you can't really necessarily name Rathrum School District, because it's encompassing of.
It's all of us.
The whole Spirit Lake, et cetera, well, Rathrum used to be named Westwood, its name was changed and many a month ago.
Oh, that's so much better, I know.
And so, so I'm like, let's go back to Westwood, we could be the Westwood Joint School District, and that way it would be inclusive of everybody and everything and no one would feel that, you know, there's a favoritism.
Well, at the, so Timberlake played Lakeland last week and Lisa and I joked and we just said, because I'm a Timberlake mom, and she's a Lakeland mom, I was like, you wear your Lakeland gear and I'm gonna wear my Timberlake gear, and she's like, we are Lakeland School District, you can't wear anything, I'm like, okay.
Yeah, we, we. You got it.
It was in a violation.
That was just, however, I will brag about Timberlake soccer. Number, number, number one in, in, you know, in our district, you know, we are, you know, three A, number one. Record is eleven and zero.
Nice.
Eleven, sorry, eleven and one, eleven wins, one tie.
Nice.
And we're headed, we are top seed, top, top, top seed in our district. And we have, you know, we've got divisions coming up, uh, we play on the fourteenth and we play the winner of uh, seat four and seat five. So we're either looking at Priest River or uh, Saint Mary's and we beat Saint Mary's six to one last night. And we beat them nine to one the first time we played them.
You're feeling good.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're feeling damn cocky.
It's okay, we're just being recorded.
And that's why we're the only.
My, my, my kids.
No.
I'm sorry, no, my uh.
Do we wanna just kind of wrap up, um, and just recap what we're gonna move forward, so Rosie and I are on the same page?
Yes.
Are you good with that, Rosanna?
Let's do it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so for our board meeting next week, we're gonna talk about the um the CDIT, which is the, the student teacher that wants to bring in her dog, remember we're gonna have that discussion with the board? Because she's requesting, so we were just gonna talk about it with everybody.
What are we calling that?
Yeah, I linked it in, it's just, it's, it's her letter, remember she drafted a whole letter to the board, so we just, I just, she titled it SDIT and so you have it on your doc.
Hey.
And then.
That's gonna be a discussion item?
Mm-hmm. Well, actually, it should, well, we have the um, hustle action after discussion, so we're fine.
Um, and then we're going, we're bringing policy thirty fifty, which is the attendance policy. And we have the draft of the attendance letter that will go out at the nine, the timeline. Um, we will send out policy thirty forty, um, for stakeholder input, it, we'll send it out Friday, Rosanna, and then we actually will leave it open longer, so, because we're not doing it, so we'll leave it open for two weeks for input, this is probably not the one for two weeks, but it'll be fine.
Yeah.
And then at our next meeting, oh, the other thing is, is we are gonna, um, are you, do you want it as a discussion item, the student clubs?
Yes, because we need direction from the board.
Yeah, okay. And then um, at the next, so in two weeks, we will talk about, if there's any directive from the student club conversation, we'll bring that back and then we will try to finalize um the two policies that we just looked at, the service animal, not the service animal, but the trained animal and the animals in schools. And then Rosanna was gonna look at the two petitions and trying to merge them together with some input from you and from admin.
Right, there's, there's a letter and then there's the two petitions.
Is that a good summary?
And then.
Yep, and the two different petitions.
Yeah. And then we're also adding eighty-two forty-five unpaid school meals.
Oh, as a discussion.
Discussion to the board.
Yep.
Unpaid school meals? You were here.
She brought that up, Brian, she gave the policy um, for the unpaid school meals uh, eighty-two forty-five. Brian and Kevin wanted us to be aware of it um, because of, of the content within it, and I said that we need to go before the board of the policy committee.
So we have some situations where we, it's, on the policy, it says that after three days, that we no longer give them an alternative lunch and we send the officer, we have them call their parent, but that's hard to take a kid away, and so sometimes we incur some costs from that and he said a couple of years ago, when we were, when, you know, it was, I think the most was like a thousand, roughly around that eleven hundred, something like that, so he just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. Um, and so, I mean, again, eventually it writes itself and we really try to kind of push parents to either put money on account or fill out the free and reduced application. Um, but it doesn't come out of food service, if we have to pay that fine, it comes out of the general fund, so he just wanted to make sure you guys were aware. So, uh, Board Chair Thompson just wanted to come to the board as a discussion. I just think you're hard-pressed to say no to a child when they're hungry.
Mm-hmm.
So. Was that a good summary, Rosanna?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So then we meet every, the first and the third Wednesday of every month from five to seven.
Does five o'clock work for you guys or is five-thirty better, five o'clock's fine?
What, yeah, okay, it's fine, five, okay.
Early's better.
What's that, I said, the earlier is better, okay.
Yeah, just for getting home to say goodnight to kiddos.
Okay.
Okay, do we wanna stop recording?
Yes, please.